Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Today is Sunday, October 7th, 2008. Tonight, City Council is meeting in a special session, which has a limited agenda, and then in a series of committee meetings. We do have a forum with all members of council present, with the usual late Nancy Bane just joining us at any moment. Onto ordinances for second reading. Oh, 11208, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts to replace the air conditioning system in the law administration building. Ordinance 11408 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce year-end appropriations. Ordinance 11508 is an ordinance amending ordinance Oh, 15107 authorize staffing levels and declaring an emergency. Welcome, Member Bane. Ordinance 11608, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Ordinance 11708 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase two three-quarter ton trucks for the street department. Ordinance 11808 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council. We got through all of those without one suspension. Congratulations, Council.
Oh, don't get too excited.
Well, I have no doubt. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11908 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President. Mr. President, at this time, I would move that we consider ordinance Oh, 11908 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This is actually the reason we're having the special session tonight. This is an ordinance executing a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement. And we've had an active mutual aid agreement with the university for a good number of years. Our current one has or will expire?
Lapsed to 26th.
Okay, for the last couple of days. And obviously, with the Halloween celebration coming up and other events, it would be very beneficial for both law enforcement bodies, the Athens Police and the Ohio University Police Force, to have this mutual aid agreement in effect.
We have a motion and a second to consider Oh, 11908 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11908.
Second.
Again, this allows the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance. And the copy of the contract is attached. This makes possible cooperation between the two entities and actually, in some ways, encourages cooperation between the two. So it's a good thing to have back on the books.
Is there further discussion? The only thing I'd like to add to this is, again, we're suspending the rules on something that we should have been notified of earlier if we could have created a tickler file of contracts and agreements. And I really hope that we can do that. Mayor Wile.
Okay, the previous ordinance was Oh, 8804. This was done four years ago. So, and actually, it was brought up to our attention by the OU police. Realize, I think I was just informed, it actually stopped the 25th. So we're trying to get this renewed as fast as possible.
Well.
Again, a four-year lapse, yes. I wasn't even paying attention then. I believe it was introduced by City Service Committee Member Debbie. I think she was on her first term at that time. So she can't keep track of it. I couldn't keep track of it. But it was done then.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 119?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. That concludes, and we stand adjourned having addressed all items on our special session agenda. We move on to the Community Issues Committee. Member Sands, are you, or Member Bane, I believe, is going to?
Member Bane.
Okay, Member Bane. Going to handle at least the first part of this.
Yes, as the person whose name is on Oh, 2905, I thought it would be good to review a little bit where it came from and to underline and make a day-glow mark on it that is an even slightly effort that involves intrusion into people's private business, unless stuffing extra people into a house happens to be the private business we're talking about. So having said that, I guess you can see where I stand, huh? I'm a landlord. I do the landlord tenant form, even though my tenants are currently over 30. They don't think it's demeaning. It's not a problem. I was a little, almost late this time because one of my tenants just came back from an internship. There were several things that happened in this, and I'd like to spend a few seconds talking about those. One of them was Athens had a terrible fire situation in October, Halloween weekend, 2005. Everybody was really upset. I actually knew students who were living in houses on Palmer Street, and they were extremely upset by the heat of the fires. And of course, everyone assumed it had to be out of town. I agitate, or somebody of my age is well familiar with what that, that's usually an explanation that's offered. And I suspect it was. And to make matters worse, the drunken thoughts threw bottles and other things at the firemen and at the policemen. I mean, you know, where does it end? And so the president of Ohio University and the mayor of Athens came together and formed a committee, saying, "What should we do to solve the problem?" And not surprisingly, since this is an educational town, they said, "One of the big problems is the student population does not understand what the requirements are." Hence, the landlord tenant form. It passed through a lot of hands. It works perfectly well in a number of cities. But, and the person who honchoed it through was not, I was not involved at all in the landlord, in the interaction. Had no part in it. But Dale was leading council, and I felt like it had to happen because I didn't want to see any more fires on Mill Street on Halloween. No, Mill Street, yeah, it was Mill Street, wasn't it? Halloween, it was in 2004. It was horrible. It was just a terrible slap in the face to the city of Athens to have that happen. So what we did was, we pulled something together from a number of sources and did some changing to it. If you look at it, you can see that. Actually, there's no "we" in this. It was actually Dale's work, much more than mine. What we wanted to do was get that niche between the big apartment buildings and the one or two-person houses got taken in. Places that have onsite monitors, not a problem. Really, in mixed neighborhoods, not so much problem. Because they have their next-door neighbors. And I've noticed on Mill Street and in my neighborhood, people do ask each other, "Well, what about this? Will you watch my house there?" But when everybody is new, there's no one to talk to. And so the landlord tenant form was developed. And possibly, and we went and stated what we wanted, you know, that we basically didn't want the big guys to do it. We just wanted that area in between where we seem to be lacking education. September 30th, it says in here, "Changes in tenants' occupants shall also be filed." There are a lot of administrative decisions. And one of the things that we did in 2005 was we attached what we thought was a pretty decent law. And if you actually look at this, it's been changed. We never really expected that it would be, the form would stay constant. Goodness, things change. More the idea is important. So one of the things that we have in there, and I cannot for the life of me think where the Big Brother comments come from. I am just, you know, I'm amazed at some of the things people have written. But anyways, having said that, and let me say that this is the compliance and disclosure statement. And the lease period is given, the name of the house, the owner's street address. None of that is confidential, I don't think. Owner's authorized agent, well, you know, if that's the case. Then what may be the problem is the first item, declaration of compliance with occupancy restrictions. Now therein may lie the problem. It's not a problem in my place, but basically, you put the name and the relationship. You are not required to provide information concerning relationships unless more than four adults reside in the dwelling, and the dwelling is located in our one or two zone. So that really limits it to a much smaller group. Okay, so what we do in this form, and this is not a terrible onerous thing. You can probably do it in a couple, five minutes. I actually told Scott to time me, but I talk pretty fast. You know, right after you tell him, even though I've had the plumber here five times, that toilet in the basement has a tendency to run. If it starts to run, give me a call. I mean, that's the kind of thing you do. You say, "Oh, this house has a creek. You might notice it. Two of your smoke detectors are hardwired. If they start to beep, for goodness sakes, get ahold of me right away because I need to change the batteries." Blah, blah. You know, so it's not tough. It is what you do if you care about your property, for goodness sakes. And, okay, so it's, first thing it says, something we all know, a rental dwelling or rooming house permit has to state the maximum number of persons who may occupy the unit. Not tough, just the law, folks. Front yard parking, quoting 230801, "Exclusive of hard-surface driveways where parking is permitted, off-street parking areas, parking structures shall not be located in front of any residential structures." Again, I hope it's enforced, and that is basically one of the rules that we like to see operating in Athens. After all, it may be one of the best hometowns in the world, but we want to keep it that way, for goodness sakes. Trash can placement. Now, this one is probably not quite enforced. In fact, I think Mr. Sands may talk about this later on. 50203, "All trash cans shall be kept in containers stored out of view from the street behind the front edge of the house, except when they're out for pickup. Trash cans may be placed at the curbside. After 7:00 PM," then it goes on and talks about when they're placed. "Plastic bags may be placed at the curbside for pickup, but no earlier than 7:00 AM on the day of the regular scheduled pickup. Trash cans and recycling containers shall be removed from the curb by sundown on the pickup day." I sometimes get bummed out when I drive down Palmer Street, and I'm still putting trash cans in the front yards that are blowing around with the wind. But, you know, it's an imperfect world. Recycling, I believe Ray Hazel had added this. We have the Section 5.05.5, talking about what we recycle. And this is a good time to do some education. I basically say, "If you're going to recycle, and I want you to do it, clean out the cans because we live in the woods, and the mice will find them if you don't clean them." And that sort of thing just seems like it's self-evident, but it's not always. About aluminum and glass and plastic and corrugated paper, I always put in a pitch for using brown paper bags instead of plastic, which is garbage. You know, that just becomes garbage. Otherwise, you use brown paper. Basically, try to go through it, give them the razzle-dazzle on it. Paperboard, cereal boxes, everything separated. Get it ready. Then we go and say, "Okay, we've got some litter issues here." Section 291201 and 130706, "All property areas and premises shall be maintained in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition, free from any accumulation of rubbish or garbage." I'll say more about that later on, about garbage cans. "Occupants shall maintain the exterior property in a condition that does not deteriorate or debase the appearance of the neighborhood or adversely alter the appearance and general character of the neighborhood that creates a fire, safety, health hazard, or is a public nuisance that contributes to neighborhood blight." I mean, this is what we all need to know. Many of us are, many of the people we're reading this with are just starting for the first time, and they lived in a probably relatively privileged world. And now they have to take out their own garbage. This is not, I mean, we can't make light of this. This is very important, what we're doing with this, we hope. Somebody's doing with this. I at least did it with mine, although my people are way beyond being first-time residents in a house of their own. And then it talks about the areas of disposing of an unsanitary nature adjoining a public room. "Accumulation of refuse. Every occupant shall dispose of all solid waste in a clean, safe, sanitary manner, placing it in containers equipped with tight-fitting covers." Then they talk about Section 130410, noise control. "No person shall recklessly make or cause to be made or continue or participate in any loud or unusual noise that disturbs the peace and quiet." Then there's the nuisance party ordinance. I don't know if this has ever been invoked. So I usually kind of skip over it because most of my people are too old to be doing this. Animal control, we don't want to see dogs running around. We don't want to get in trouble with the commissioners over. Dog control. And talk about barking and cleaning up after your dog. And it always makes me so happy when I see people walking along with their little plastic bags. It makes this place a much better place to live as a consequence of Dale's work on that, right? I mean, we all know it had to be done. Anyway, there it is. Then you go through and talk about what is going on on owner confirmation and then occupant confirmation. And it says that the current revised code is in place. Now tell me, how long did it take? It says it's a minor misdemeanor. That may be the crux of what we have to do on this. I don't really know. Maybe we can talk about that. But rest assured, this is material that even people who have lived in a house for a year cannot be heard by talking about. You need to know what day is garbage day. You need to know when the truck is the ultimate last moment to get the can out to the street. And it's not trying to be Big Brother. Pardon me, it is not. This is education at its best, civic education. Just remember that many of the recipients of said education have no other place to get it from. I don't suppose in Upper Arlington and other places they have the nuisance party thing. You can poke fun at it if you want, but at least tell them. I mean, ignorance of the law is no excuse, but how on earth can we expect people to perform exactly the way we want them when we don't tell them what the rules are? This is an effort to tell them what the rules are. So I don't understand where on earth people can get these ideas that somehow, this is a horrible thing that has terrible consequences. Sorry, but it just doesn't flow. It is the law. This is what you're responsible for. And so I would say, as the previous sponsor of this ordinance, who does not want to be the spokesman yet another time, so I'm in the crosshairs of every landlord that doesn't want, I would suggest that we decide, do we want to keep the form? Yes or no? If there are four people that want to keep it, then the next question, decision is, should we change something about it? Most of it is up to the administration. It's not really our problem. I don't really, I mean, I think I felt, I have no ownership of this. They know the law. They can stress it and enforce it. And then, but certainly, we were focusing on that group, not the big places, but the littler places. Not the, well, the mixed neighborhoods, we couldn't really separate out. So maybe that's a question. Do we want everyone to do it? I think that's probably overkill. And then last but not least, what penalty would we like to see on it? And maybe we can start over again. I do know from my students that almost, oh, well, I know last year, I don't have very many students right now, but many of the leases have already been signed. And so signing this at the time of the leases in September for August 2009 is not a wise idea. This will be consigned to the papers that everybody carries around for two weeks and then gets rid of. We hope they recycle them, but I doubt it. So how can we handle the problem? It seems to me, what I always do is when they come for the keys, I talk to them about it. Doesn't take that long. Talk about the idiosyncrasies of the place. Now, I don't have 100 places, but then I don't take 100 places times 700 to the bank either. So, I mean, let's just get right down to brass tacks. And the question is, what do the people who are closest? Now, you can imagine, there's probably, I'm going to get wound up again. There's probably somebody out there who could come up with a different strategy. And maybe we need to wait a week and listen for it. But I don't know. This is fairly clear-cut, clean. And again, I don't take 100 times 700 to the bank every month.
Okay, Nancy.
Yeah.
Nancy gave us, what started out as a synopsis of the.
How long did I spend? Ask them. How long did it take?
About the red button, go on.
14 minutes.
14 minutes. It's not?
Not bad. Not bad. Law Director Patrick Lang would like to have a moment to talk about enforcement of the.
Well, before we start, I wish in the future, if we're going to have something this revolutionary, we could save all of ourselves some time if we just scheduled for a committee meeting. Okay, Pat?
Isn't this a committee?
No, but last week, having us all stand around and listen, you know, read and talk.
Well, I conferred with the president of council. He said that was the best way to go. So I guess maybe yell at him while you're yelling at me, too.
I don't think I was yelling.
She already has.
I was not yelling. If you want to hear yelling, I can yell.
Okay, Patrick.
Thank you. And Nancy, it may surprise you or may not surprise you to know that I actually, I was listening very closely, and I think I agree with every single thing that you said during your background on this. And let me just say that in all the years that I've lived in Athens, both in four years as a student and more recently as a homeowner, I've lived on the city's south side, which is, you know, Sherry and Bill and Chris. So you still see the other half. Anyway, it's almost entirely residential, very quiet part of town. And so some of my neighbors down in that part of town don't understand what the big deal is about the landlord-tenant forms. Now, of course, I have a lot of friends that live in the Near East and the Near North and West sides of town as well. And I talk with residents of those areas all the time. And I understand that these used to be largely residential areas. So I try to imagine myself as someone who lived in this part of town and perhaps had lived there for a while, maybe raised a family there. And I cannot imagine the frustration that I would feel of watching as families move away and as one house after another converts to student rental. I can't imagine the frustration I would feel as my neighborhood gets noisier and as the houses around me become more dilapidated. So in part to combat these problems, I imagine working to pass the landlord-tenant disclosure law and to watch as more than two years after we've worked, and after Nancy, after you had worked to pass this law, to watch for more than two years as the city lifted not one single finger ever to attempt to enforce this law. And so, you know.
And I tried to nag. I nagged.
I know it wasn't like I tried.
I don't like nagging, but I did nag.
And so, you know, we go.
You have a lot of nagging?
So we elect a new mayor. And the mayor appoints a new director of code enforcement. We elect a new city council. We elect a new law director. And then still watch as no one has yet been charged under this law. And so for those that feel this way, I would just like you to, I would ask you to please understand this, that I do hear you and that I know that your frustrations are entirely valid. But I ask you to please hear me out and consider these following three points. First, what is the goal of this law? The intent of this law, as I understand it and as Nancy, as you had just reviewed with us, was to educate tenants about their rights and responsibilities and to provide some level of assurance that the landlord was making these necessary disclosures, that he was giving this information about what the law is to the people that needed to get it. I think we all share that goal. I certainly, you know, for what it's worth, it is very little, you do share that goal as well. I believe that was the intent of the law, although I admit I was not here when it was written. Nancy, you were. In fact, however, had I been around at the time, I would have raised some of these concerns at the time that the law was passed. Second, I would hope that we could at least agree that there are some problems with this law. I believe there are. My chief prosecutor, Lisa Eliasen, who's prosecuted code violations for 20 years in this office and would be the person that would actually be responsible for enforcing this in court, believes that there are problems with this law. And let me just say that I don't think this is a question just as simple as enforce the law or don't enforce the law. At least, I don't think that's the right question. I've actually brought with me tonight, these are 291 criminal complaints that have been drafted by my office. They're ready to file. City council decides that we just want to go full speed ahead. We want to, you know, file this. You know, then we're ready to do it. We've got them right here. But I question again whether it's not appropriate to at least look at, you know, is there something else worth weighing here? And Nancy, you kind of alluded to this toward the end of your statement. So again, I'm not saying, "Don't enforce the law." In fact, I'm saying the exact opposite of that. I'm saying, "We need to enforce this law, but are we doing it in a way that is responsible and in a way that kind of limits our potential problems down the road with this?" So I guess my question gets down to, again, the last thing you said, which was the penalty section. And was it city council's intent at the time they passed this law to criminalize the conduct that we're talking about here today? Now, I've talked to members of council and members who were on council at the time, and I have some doubts about that. Accusing someone of a crime, even if it's just a minor misdemeanor crime, it's a big deal. And it's something that, as a former prosecutor, that I take very seriously. Even when, again, even when it's only a minor misdemeanor. Criminal charge requires proof beyond a reasonable doubt in a courtroom. This is the highest burden that exists in our legal system. And again, as I had mentioned in the code at the council meeting last week, it does raise questions about who is the criminal in these cases where we have a lot of, you know, a lot of houses that are owned by entities. Now, there are some theories of organizational liability, which I won't get into to any great extent here. But I was speaking with the director of code enforcement earlier today and asked him the question specifically of, you know, these houses that are owned by churches that are not in compliance. And who in the world do we charge in the case of a church? And he said to me, you know, I guess it would be the person at the top. We would charge the minister. Now, to me, and I think to most people, we realize that that is an absurd outcome. And if there is a way that we can fix it, then I hope we will look at that.
The head of the vestry, or whatever its equivalent. I mean, the head of the financial arm.
Well, again, these are questions, Well, again, these are questions, and that's part of the reason why I brought this here, was to get some answers so that we can move forward with enforcement. But finally, you know, I do question, is there a better way to achieve our shared goals in this? Is there a more effective way to enforce this law? Maybe there isn't. I'm not going to pretend to have all the answers, and if that's the case, that there is no better way, and that the thing to do is just full speed ahead, then we will absolutely do that. We will absolutely do that. But I do believe that it is worthwhile to at least explore alternatives. That's why I brought this to council. Paul, you had mentioned an interesting point to me that I had not thought of, maybe this had been discussed before, but the idea of maybe tying the enforcement, instead of making it a criminal offense, to tie it to rental, the rental permits, just like we do with the fees, and then track them down that way, and then, you know, if we're talking about pulling someone's permit, that's, you know, going to be a much bigger financial deal than this $150 fine that they're going to get as a, as a minor misdemeanor.
And it's not pulling, it's just not renewing it.
Or not renewing, sure.
It's a permit.
There is no right to a permit.
So, in closing, again, I really do think that we have shared goals here. I'm committed to working with council and assisting where I can in any way that council wishes. I'm pleased to see that we have some folks that have turned out tonight to share their thoughts as well. Some were good enough, actually, to come to my office earlier in the summer, and Mr. Sefranik, you were there, and to address some of these concerns, and I really appreciate that you took the time to do that as well. And so I guess, finally, I would just say that to all the members of council, that as always, I humbly await your direction.
Members of council?
Well, could I add one more thing? I think we had two years in which there was all this wink, wink, nudge, nudge, don't enforce it. And I think that maybe we need a cooling off period, and I was, maybe this is, that's what this is. I probably, if I were God, would not have sent it forward to be in this state. I mean, but it's not a council decision, it's an administrative decision. But I think that eventually, somebody's going to have to do something. But I think we have to acknowledge that there was a serious double dealing, or at least double talking going on. And I, you know, I spent many hours talking to Matt, who used to be the editor of the paper when he was a freshman and sophomore, and he's already graduated, about it. And I'd just say, don't shave those words with me, you know, that kind of stuff. And certainly, the penalty can be changed. We can do any of those, but, and I don't think today is the day necessarily to do it.
I have to agree with that. I'm not sure if today's the day to make that decision, but let's talk about it. Member Phillips, you've been trying to say something?
Well, I like the suggestion of tying it to the permit. That seems appropriate to me because it seems like, you know, it's something that we have listed in our code in relation to rentals. So I think that that makes sense. The other thing, in reading through all the background information, that raised a question for me, and I'd like some feedback from the law director about this, the actual language that's in the code talks about filing the form with the code office. But the form itself, which was, which can be changed administratively and has been amended once, I believe administratively, actually talks about the occupants making it available immediately upon request to an Athens city code enforcement officer or police officer.
But that's not in the code itself?
It's not in the code itself, and I have a concern about how reasonable that is, particularly if tenants sign that at the time that they sign the lease, which may be a year before they even move in.
And I'd been asked about that question, and I think I reached very much the same conclusion that you did, which is that, you know, what we're enforcing ultimately is what is in the code, and since that part is not in the code, I don't think that is, that is controlling. What is written down in the law would control in that situation.
Right. So I guess I'd like us, at the very least, to amend the form so it's only requiring the things that are required in the code.
Well, that's getting the habit of asking the administration to do it, because after all, that's what...
Right. That's what I mean. Yeah, I think it can be, and then in both the owner confirmation and the occupant confirmation, it says the penalty for failure to have this form shall be a minor misdemeanor, but what they're required to do in the code is to file it.
Exactly. And again, I was asked exactly this question, and my answer was, was exactly that, which is that we go with what is in the code.
It says '06.
Yeah, and it's a new one revised.
The tying it to the permit is a good idea, but administratively, the permits are biannual, correct? They go for two years?
No, they're annual.
No, every year.
They're annual?
Inspections are biannual.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The difficulty with that, of course, is that the permits are actually bought in January, and most leases go from June to June. So if, let's say, you have somebody with outstanding violations, which would be a simple thing, say, if you have outstanding violations, no different than what we're doing with the traffic license, traffic tickets right now. If, you know, if you accumulate enough traffic tickets in the city of Athens and you go get your license renewed, they're going to put a stop on it. They're going to say, no, you have too many tickets in Athens, you can't get your driver's license. You usually get somebody's attention. The downside of that is, of course, when they go in for a permit in January and they have outstanding violations, whether of this nature or any other nature, and they don't get a permit, what do you do with the tenants who are in there till June? You just say, okay, you, you know, you know, you could say you have 30 days to clear them out, you know, or fix the violations. To me, fixing violations is probably not draconian enough, because that's already what happens, is that if you follow the pattern of most of the violations that end up being prosecuted, you know, they get to the point where just they're about to enter into court, and then they're, they're dealt with at that time. So it's kind of a quandary. I mean, you know, I could think of about a half dozen different ways to deal with this. One is that you give them 30 days to fix the violations, and then you have, we have, you know, you know, turn-on-tap fees, fees, and they are for, when you get your water turned off, you get charged a fee. When it get turned on, you get charged a fee. When you've lapsed in terms of refusal for your permit, or rather, non-renewal for a permit for a violation, and you get the thing fixed, there's a cost with that, too. That would be one thing. The other thing is, you give them 30 days, and then you put them in OU in, the students in OU in, and then proceed to charge against the landlord for whatever room service they owe you in supplies. From my mind, this would be actually more noticeable, money going in versus money coming out. Money, rather, money coming in would be the first thing they'd notice when they don't have a rental permit. Money going out, they'd even notice more. This was discussed many years ago, too.
The only thing I would add, and, you know, if council does decide to, in another meeting, decide to start looking at this sort of thing, I can obviously research whatever needs researched, but I do know that at the very least, I was talking to Lisa Eliasen, again, about this, who, one of her other job responsibilities is to prosecute or to chase down the money for the rental permit fees that are not paid. And I don't know exactly off the top of my head what the compliance rate was, but it was overwhelming. I mean, with some of the people, we really had to, you know, to chase them down, but at the end of the day, they did pay because they realized if they don't, they're not going to have their permit. So whether it would work the same way with these forms, I don't know, but at least we do have somewhat of a model that we can look at where we've had some moderate success.
We did that two years ago. I mean, it was, and we even, I was so relentless, I said, when that, when that property changes hands, because we were owed thousands of dollars by people, and we just sort of let it go. But fundamentally, go back and understand that I think if you ask these students, most of them have already a lease for 2009 already accomplished.
And you made the point earlier that...
And so it's not realistic to talk about it.
Way ahead of time.
Yeah, so, so what you have to do is really have this education take place when they pick up the key. That's when, you know, it's not, in the, in the real world, the world that we live in, not, not a world that is, you know, it's not, they're, the good places are rented already.
President Bowne?
What's the fine, and I'm, sorry for blindsiding you, for renting a place without a permit?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look at that. I don't know if...
Because that needs to be substantial for this to work in this way.
I know the maximum fine on a minor misdemeanor would be $150, so, and that's what we're looking at now, which, again, that's, for some folks, that's not much of a deterrent.
No, absolutely not.
Less than the permit fee.
Other members of council?
It is.
Don't pay either in your home fee.
$180 is the...
I'd just comment that I have received a number of comments from Athens citizens who are, they're eager to see us move forward with some, you know, resolution to this and, you know, having a form in place. And if I could, you know, the number one comment that I get from citizens as I'm out is code enforcement and, and, you know, working with landlords and making this a livable community. It's the number one issue. If you look at the, you know, the last council member-at-large voter guide, League of Women Voters questions, it's, it's about code enforcement issues. So I think we need to move forward. I would be eager to see us moving forward, whether or not it's this, you know, the criminal prosecution of it, I'm not sure. Maybe we can come to some resolution, as you say, of tying it with a renewal of the rental permits.
Number two.
I was just wondering, if a landlord has numerous properties, is there just one charge filed?
No, the way it's written, it's actually one per property. So, again, in the stack that I, the stack that I showed you here is, yeah, it's exactly. So there is some, you know, I say $150 maximum fine, that would be per property, so, I mean, it could add up to something more, but, but, you know, for a lot of the landlords that may only own, you know, one or two or three, then it would be obviously a much smaller number.
But the one landlord who has not been successful in getting any of his tenants to sign one of the forms could pay some pretty stiff penalties here.
Awesome.
I think our biggest, and I think everyone should have a copy of the, the list of folks that, that the code office right now is saying is out of compliance. I think, was it 66?
I think that's...
That was where the 70 came from, I rounded up.
Yep, that's a whole second.
Thank you.
I would agree with what Member Nysli said regarding concerns and emails that I've received as well from constituents on the West Side. I do understand the spirit of the ordinance and its good intent, but I've also heard concerns from the other side as well, from landlords and the challenges that they face in this, in this issue. So I'm torn, because I do understand that a number of these issues are already on the books with, with code, and they can be enforced. And I don't think we need to necessarily spoon-feed grown-ups that happen to be first-time tenants. So it's, I'm torn, because I do see the, the good intent behind this and communicating and educating people, and as I've learned from Member Bain's efforts in, in educating the, the community about recycling and, and, so, education is huge and very important, which is, I think, the background behind this. But I, I think it, it looks like it needs tweaking or some, some, being addressed somehow.
Kent, could you say the form or the process?
That's a good question. I think maybe a little bit of both. I also question, from a green perspective, all this paperwork and, and the city's responsibility and filing it and keeping it, and, I don't know.
I tried to champion the cause of having it online.
Uh-huh, which I applaud.
And I think that would be the ideal way to do it. And a shorter form, but two pages, one page.
Kent, herein, the discussions among the members, is one reason I don't think we're going to reach a resolution this evening, because there are, we need to address concerns about the basic form and concerns about the penalties, et cetera, so, but, we've heard from council members, I, okay, Mayor Wild.
A couple of things. When this was being put forth, the process, there were two different subtexts. One is information to the student, the other one is to track the number of students. If we're going for information, which I think was the main thrust eventually, one of the things I had suggested a long time ago was to actually put this information on the, on the door. I think that was nixed at the time with the council that was in place. In other words, it would not take, create a pay for chase, but the requirement is all this information would have to be posted and placard in, within the residence, within a rental unit. I think some people felt that was unnecessary or something like that. The other thing is, in terms of trying to track down your students to get them to sign, they have to sign a pay, a check every time, or they do cash, but they're, so you're interacting with them once a month at least, on some level. And this, it wouldn't take much to get this information to them and have them sign this. I'm surprised that they refuse to sign it. Worst-case scenario, they could sit there and scribble something illegible. So from my mind, that's not, it's not, it's a moot point to say, we can't sign it, we won't sign it, it's an intrusion to our privacy. It's knowledge for them. If they don't sign it, maybe the thing to do is to get rid of the warning option and just go ahead and hammer them whenever there's a, you know, start off with a $100 litter fine and go up from there. I mean, that's what I hear right now, is that the $20 start is way too, too light for them. All in all, I think we should just move ahead and start the prosecution phase at this point and see where we end up.
Number four.
My recollection of the discussion at the time is that there was a, you know, another purpose, not, I mean, I like the idea of having the information just posted somewhere for, for tenants, but there was also an interest in trying to deal with over occupancy of rental units and a really deep frustration for people who live in close-in neighborhoods who are dealing with some of the, you know, stresses and quality of life issues in, because landlord-tenant law provides, the city has to give 24 hours' notice before going and doing inspections, it's, it's always been very difficult to do any enforcement around over occupancy and that a lot of people felt like that's one of the real pressures, and this was an effort to address that issue.
May I add something on that? Over occupancy, there's been, I, being a member of the neighborhood association at one time, we would have regular meetings with the previous mayor and actually parts of the university. We were always striving to try getting a database of local addresses to the students to, not for the general public, but to cross-reference with our, with our code office in terms of number of rentals. So if you had six names addressed to one residency, you could actually obviously say, obviously, the local address is such that there is an over occupancy problem here. The other thing that, that assumes, of course, that the university's willing to cooperate with that. The other side of, of course, you have to say, okay, is over occupancy a, you know, lack of knowledge from the tenant or purposely to save money from the tenant? And in one case, there's a section in the code that requires a placard in your house or someplace on file within the landlord of occupancy. It's a little postcard about yay big, I believe.
It's in the form.
Yes, okay. And therefore, that I've seen in some houses in my travels on, you know, campaigning up and down, is actually on, in the front door or something like that. So that gives knowledge to the student who can see this thing. Now, I'm only supposed to have three people in here, or I've got four, and why does this say only three? They can ask that question. On other hands, they're perfectly willing to add that extra person to cut back on the amount, to share the rent. So how do you, how do you deal with that at that point, you know? So information can only go so far.
We've heard from the law director, members of council. I know members of, citizens have come to speak to us also, and so I'm going to give them a chance. Again, I, I believe that we're going to have to have a work session sometime in the very near future to discuss this and this only, because we have an agenda with a good deal left on it, and we can't spend much more time than we would like to, probably. So I am going to ask citizens who want to speak to, please, I will recognize you, and we will have to watch the three-minute.
Good evening. I'm Ed Bowne, 20 Sunnyside Drive, and co-chair of the Near East Side Neighborhood Association. Quite often, we develop laws because there's a problem of behavior. In fact, many of our laws are written to resolve some kind of a problem. I drive often, well, maybe not all that often, between here and Columbus, and I've noticed when I drive between Athens and Nelsonville, about 95% of the people are exceeding the speed limit, which is 55 miles an hour. Sometimes you tell people, it's 55. It's 55? Really, 55? They're going 60, 62, and quite often, the police don't do anything about it. They tend to say, well, if you're going a little bit above, and there's sort of a general, I don't know how much it's true, but there's this feeling, if you go about five miles above the speed limit, they aren't going to get you. Try seven or eight, and they may get you. Should we say, well, should change the law? Why don't we go ahead and make it 60? You know, we've argued about East State Street, people go 35 miles an hour. Maybe we should change the law and make it 35. And then Mayor Abel said, well, then they'll go 40 and 45. And so the question is about enforcement. The Near East Side Neighborhood Association is in favor of enforcement or in favor of the education, because we think it's needed. We think it's an important element of the total process of renting a house. Now, it's been suggested that the minor misdemeanor may be a little bit harsh, and it may be, and that may be something worthy of a working session. And it's been suggested tying it to the rental permit, which I think is a very good argument, but then the mayor says, well, the rental permits are due in January. There's a very simple solution to that. I've never quite figured out why rental permits in a city which almost all rentals are from summer to summer are in January. It makes absolutely no sense. And so the simple solution is change the rental permits from June to June. And then you come in and say, I'd like to renew my rental permit for next year, and you say, I'm sorry, you haven't filed the requisite information. I think that would solve that problem.
Thanks, Mr. Bowne. Mr. Sefranik?
Phil Sefranik, 34 Grove Street. First of all, I would like to suggest that the law director's office should be congratulated on getting, as I read in the OU Post, 50% compliance simply by an announcement and I would guess a few letters. I looked at the, the list, I think in early part of this year, and I think it was about 15, 20%. So this is no time to back off. This is time to move forward. A few cases, I suggest, would drive that very close to 100%. I also read in the Post article that the options to be considered were simply eliminating the law or requesting that the law director move forward with the existing law or modifying the existing law. I detect little support for eliminating the law. I hope I'm right. As to between the other two alternatives, consider, if you will, that as cases are filed, they may be fought upon occasion, and that defense attorneys may file motions. The court may tell, say, there are problems with this law, which require a change. So it would seem to me to make sense to put off making any changes that you may anticipate or you may want to make and wait until we get some experience with the existing law. And then, then if necessary, or if desired, make changes at that point. Indeed, I think I had a conversation with the president of council in which, that was his suggestion, and I agreed with him. I really urge you to move forward now. I think you'll find a higher level of compliance than you expect. I think you'll be better, in a better position to make whatever changes you want to make later on, after you've had some court experience. If you don't move forward, you're dishonoring not only the, the people who really, really want to see this law go into effect, you're also dishonoring those landlords who have complied. So, you know, I would urge you to move forward and not wait. Go ahead, file some cases, see what happens. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other citizens wishing to speak? And I'm, sorry, I, I knew both of these people, I actually introduced them. I should ask everyone to, to give us your name and your addresses, please.
Jennifer Romero, 10 Nottingham Drive.
Thank you.
I'm speaking both as a citizen and as a rental manager, so I see both sides of this. I do have, I'm one of the landlords that do, do the form, most of mine, I think all of them have turned it in. The concerns that I have are, I feel uncomfortable explaining the laws to the kids. I'm, I didn't pass any of the ordinances, I wasn't here when any of them were passed, so therefore, I tell them that if they have any questions, they need to go talk to the city. The thing that I see, I think the theory behind the form is good. I think the implementation maybe was wrong. I think the implementation maybe was wrong. The kids aren't reading it. They're signing it because they think they have to to get the place that they want. Like you said, the good places are gone, you know, sometimes before September. So I think that's part of the problem. You know, I guess, I know there's a specific purpose of putting it towards the student neighborhoods or stuff like that, but why are we, you know, I was a new resident here six years ago. Should I have had to sign this form so I knew what the laws was? You know, I understand these are kids, students, but I don't feel like I should be spoon-feeding them. They are adults, you know. Most of them don't even read my lease. I have to go through, and if they mess up with something on their lease, I have to explain that to them. So even though I tell them about the lease, tell them about the form, they're not fully comprehending this. So I think there probably should be some more discussion on the form on how to better implement it so that it is a good thing, because I do think it is necessary to educate the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Hiller, and I also am a landlord, but also a member of the Westside Neighborhood Association, and I live at 117 Central. I do comply with the law. I think, though, that it should be changed somewhat, and I like Paul's idea of having something posted in the house, like having the rules posted in the house, because I've had the same experience as, what, I forget her name was, with my tenants. They read it, maybe they read it really fast. I mean, I could read it to them, I guess. But actually, my tenants had lived in Athens for several years before they rented the house, so I didn't really see a need to do that. But I think having something posted in the house, like a laminated piece of paper, maybe the code enforcement office could bring it when they do the inspections, or they could be sent to landlords, depending on how many rental units they have. I think something like that would be a lot more educational, a lot more effective. And I think the landlords would feel more like this law has more of a purpose, because I think a lot of people just feel like, oh, well, you know, all my tenants, like, I don't know, you know, just looked at it really quickly and signed it, and they were really busy at the time. So busy that it was very difficult to even get them to sign it. So I think something like that would make a lot more sense to change it slightly and maybe have some form that, you know, can be laminated for all these laws and that they be put in the house.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering also about code enforcement and how much paperwork they have. And I think we should, you know, with a working group, we should get some code enforcement people involved in helping to make any new decisions that are made about it.
Thank you. Thanks. Other comments? Joan? Yes?
Joan Kornansky, 56 Mount Street. I'm not a landlord, and I am a member of the Westside Neighborhood Association. Many of the things that I was prepared to say have already been said, but I would like to reiterate what Nancy said, that in most cases renters in neighborhoods are first-time renters, transient, sometimes renting only up to nine months because they're not here over the summer. Perhaps they do rent for two years. And as first-time renters, they're not aware of such things as the things Nancy mentioned, taking the trash out, animal behavior, noise, et cetera, et cetera. And how do I know that? Because as a homeowner in a mixed neighborhood, I've had to have these discussions with some of the renters in my neighborhood. They've always been positive discussions, but I don't think that's my responsibility. I was particularly relieved to see this instrument come forward and this new code written into, this new law written into code, or however you want to word it, because I don't really think it's my responsibility to tell the renters next door that, no, that mattress can't sit out in your yard. You need to get rid of it, right? They should already know these things. They should understand how they have to maintain to a certain extent. The other thing I'd like to say is that I personally witnessed a landlord sitting down with two of his tenants, I was driving by in a vehicle, reading the document to them. And they were sitting there with this landlord who I happen to know. Now, you can just give them the document and have them sign it, or you could stand there and have them just look it over and then tell them to sign it, and you sign it. Or you could do what I did as a good neighbor and talk to them and explain what was going on. In this case, all they would have to do would be read through the document. Most of the landlords in town are very familiar with all the codes that are listed in the document. I think, like other issues in this town, this should be given an opportunity to go forward, such as a 24-hour parking rule, which doesn't please me because I have to move my car every day, even though I walk. Has it been effective in preventing storage parking in our neighborhoods? Yes, so that's why I do it. So you can't please all of us all the time, but I think that this was an excellent step forward to relieve those people in the neighborhood who are not only putting up with some of the difficulties of first-time transient renters, but we're also having to do the information sessions. And with that, I'll end.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say something right now? Thank you all for your comments, and comments that I've also received, emails and phone calls, some visits. I'm sure other council members have also. We do, I've got notes, I know the Law Director has notes. We will schedule a working session at which we may well be able to reach some consensus about moving ahead with this pile that the Law Director has or looking at some other options. But I don't think we have time for everybody to sit here tonight and do that. So I appreciate you coming, talking to us. We will let you know, we'll do this work session soon. We're going to move on. We have another form that we need to get filed, an identity theft form, actually policy that the city needs to put into effect. What, did you know about this?
This was actually, this is the federal government helping us out here. It's an order that came down from the Federal Trade Commission. Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me right now. But basically, what it says is that every, basically every organization that extends credit of any kind has to have in place certain, which is probably a good goal, to have in place certain safeguards against identity theft, such as locking files and making sure that people's personal, you know, identifying information is kept safe. And so it's certainly a good idea. But they didn't give us much time to work on this. The law goes into effect on November 1st. We just got notice of this last week, I believe it was. So we will be needing to suspend in order to pass this. And again, this is basically just something that, to answer the question, the obvious question as to why does this apply to us, there was a ruling that basically anyone that runs a utility, so technically because we're charging people for, you know, water service after, you know, the water has been delivered, that is technically extending them credit, or at least that's what the federal government tells us. So that's why we have to pass the resolution.
I think all members got a copy of this. It'll be on the agenda next week, and we'll discuss it briefly, and then, again, we'll probably suspend it because we need to, we're going to be a couple days behind in the date of compliance anyway. Any other questions about, concerns about that particular thing?
So I received an electronic model of this. I assume somebody's going to make one. Who's in charge of doing that?
We got that from the Ohio Municipal League. That was actually based on the Cleveland model, which was based on the, I think, Nashville, Tennessee model. And so it may be a little more comprehensive than what we really need for our purposes here. That's something I'm happy to take a look at and make any recommendations, but I mean, ultimately, it'll be up to council as to what, you know, what exactly the policy is going to be.
Okay.
I can do that by Monday.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, Councilmember Bain brought us a trash container here. And she mentioned, when she was talking about the landlord-tenant form, one of the issues that has always bothered me was, it clearly says that trash will be stored out of sight behind the front of the house in approved containers. And she and I were having a discussion today, and so she went to Lowe's and borrowed a container, which she would like to show and tell.
Show and tell.
This is a 48 gallon container, so it's bigger than our current code.
And it has a lid.
It has a lid. In my neighborhood, there was moss raining down from the wind last night. On Homer Street, there was Natty Light boxes, red and blue cups, all kinds of paper. It was horrible. So I would like to suggest that we consider stipulating this for all the rental properties in R1 districts that do not empty into a dumpster with a commensurate rise in cost. You know, so it's 48, so it's two. It's not one. So we can consider that later on. I have to take that back to Lowe's, but.
We have a trash bag?
$60. $60. I bought one, that's for, literally. $60 for that is, and I bought one when the top got lost because I didn't think I should be not having a top on my garbage can, and it's lasted for two years. It's not quite perfect, but it looks pretty good. It's pretty sturdy. And so I think stipulating isn't a bad idea. For next, for 1st of September, they said they could probably do it. And the landlords are supposed to buy them in the R3 zones, where there are high-density users, where there are six garbage cans in the front yard rolling in the street. We'll consider it.
Okay.
And I'll take it back to Lowe's.
Somebody have something to say? You certainly do. Mr. Newman?
I want to hear what you have to say, Ed.
Ed Newman, Carrier Street. The only flaw I see in that is the tops, like on a windy day, it'll still blow that top off. I have hundreds of those on campus, and that's what happens.
I think it would be better than.
So I don't know, if there was somehow a way to get it, where they had a little bungee that hooks on to something or.
Oh, my goodness. We can't get them to do landlord-tenant forms. Come on. I think you're probably right, but I mean, it's not going to solve every problem, but I only have moss in my yard. Huge chunks.
Thank you.
Huge chunks of moss. I don't know where it came from.
Okay.
It was raining moss.
Thank you. We're going to move on to finance and personnel.
Could we stop for a moment and ask, Alahu, you want to bring?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're not.
Yeah, let the wellhead protection.
Well, first of all, I.
Could we redo it?
Right. I have an addendum to our finance. Member Nisley has an announcement.
Just a miscellaneous item for community issues, and just to announce to the community citizens who might be listening, that we do still need some volunteers for the street patrols to go out, city safety teams to go out with city personnel. We have a 9 to 12 shift and a 12 to 3 a.m. shift, and that is for this Saturday night. And a lot of us have been members of that before. You go in a little bit ahead of time, probably an hour ahead of time, you get your gear, and we'll be wearing white this year, I hear, and you get instructions on, and formed together in groups. And so it's a, it's a safe endeavor. I think it's a really good community service kind of presence out on Halloween night to know that there are people out there in the streets willing to give help, instructions, directions, that kind of thing, and just be a presence if people have open containers in places where they don't, they're not supposed to have them. So I'd make a plea to anybody who has a few hours, 9 to midnight's a very reasonable time. People are still fairly calm. And there to contact Ron Lucas at the City Street Department, and his email is R, as in Ron, L U C A S at C I dot Athens dot O H dot U S. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, I was just wanting to make sure that Member Nisley got to make her point.
So we're rearranging the agenda to put.
If there's an objection for the Environment Committee going next week, because we have Mike Cooper here to help us propose some proposed changes to the wellhead protection. Mike, do you want to join us here? So the wellhead team has been looking at ways to improve our wellhead protection plan for quite a while. I think they sort of continuously, as they encounter problems and as they look at other ordinances that other cities have in place, and they find ideas that might work here in Athens, they put these together, and Mr. Cooper's from the Athens City County Health Department, and he has, he's in charge of enforcing the wellhead protection plan hired on by the city. He's been doing this for a couple of years now, I believe. And I've passed out summaries of this to council members. This includes all the changes you'll see in, they're numbered, one through, I believe it's 15. And in red is new text that's being added for ordinance, and black is existing text. And I just figured, Mike, you could sort of go through this with us here and offer any comments that you have.
Well, basically, what we're, what we're trying to do here, we've been looking at the ordinance, we've been looking at the ordinance of several other cities in the state of Ohio, namely Dayton and Xenia area. Dayton was the pioneer wellhead protection program in the state, and we had, at our meeting last Thursday, we had a couple of representatives from the City of Dayton come and tell us about some of their experiences. They certainly have some challenges that would be worst-case scenario stuff here. They have super fun sites sitting on their wellfields and just a whole lot of other issues. It's an industrial town. All this was in place before they passed their wellhead ordinance, so they had to do a lot of backtracking to begin with, and certainly had an uphill fight, but what they've done is pretty remarkable. The changes that we're proposing to the ordinance come from, one, looking at other ordinances, and two, from comments that we've received and complaints that we received from, from the citizens concerning certain activities in the wellhead that we didn't feel were covered adequately in the current version of the ordinance. So that's, that's what you'll see on the list of items that, that we're proposing to change. Without going through each of them individually, I would ask the members if any of them had any specific questions about some of the items that we're trying to address.
And I'll take that. There are a couple of, most of them are just simple changes, altering definitions, adding some acronyms, and small changes like that that don't have a significant impact on the ordinance. I have forwarded these to the Chamber of Commerce and met with one local business person that may be impacted by this, so I have their comments. Some of the ones that council should, should be aware of in terms of thinking over how to implement these and if we should. One is a change, it's adding a discontinuous of use. We have one paragraph in there. This is changing that and adding to it so that any property that's, excuse me, any property that is no longer being used for 60 days has to remove regulated substances. So these are large quantities of potentially hazardous substances. And, Mike, do you have any, any further comment on that section?
Well, that's, we would, we would add that on to language that already exists in the ordinance, that if a non-conforming but regulated facility goes dormant for a year, it's pretty much done. We can't, they, if it were a gas station that went out of business for a year, would never be allowed to be reestablished as a gas station with underground storage tanks. And this discontinuance of use paragraph just kind of builds on that for not necessarily something that's going out of business permanently, but something that's going to be dormant for a little while without any adequate oversight or potential security issues. We would like to have all potentially hazardous materials removed from the site and out of wellhead protection area. So it's basically just amplifying existing language and giving us a little more to work with there.
Nancy?
I was wondering, Mike, about the MSDS sheets. You have them submitting them with their registration, but wouldn't you want them to keep them on the site, too?
Yes, we do want MSDS sheets to be on-site at the facility, and I believe there's already language in place in the current ordinance requiring that. We do want that, that material submitted to us in a situation where we're doing a facility expansion or a new construction project. We want to know what is going to be on-site and what we can expect in terms of spill control and potential hazards.
Since those change all the time, how are they staying up to date? I mean, they don't change all the time, but there is.
Yeah. And again, they are, we review the MSDS sheets when we go back and do our registration follow-up inventory inspections. We want to take a look at the files and see if there have been any changes. We are also in here proposing some changes to the registration process, and we're asking for a little more information, and I think we'd like to tighten up the frequency of registration to either, instead of every three years, we want to maybe look at, maybe consider looking at it manually. And, you know, part of our language in here is to. to put, put sort of the burden of the registration renewal on the entity itself. We will supply you with the forms, but we want you to update with us any changes to your facility so we know what to expect when we come around for regular inspections.
Thank you.
So one of, one of the things that we're proposing to do here is adding language relating to construction or modification of the land in the wellhead protection area, and also fill operations. In regards to construction, we've, we've included language that talks about what's prohibited to be used as land, or as fill in, in the wellhead protection area. There's also a few places here where it references, or Title 27, just to make sure that, I mean, it's already a city code, but to emphasize that they have to be following all the pertinent city codes in regards to that. One of the changes that we're proposing, this is in 11 on the handouts that I've passed out, one of the things that was suggested was to, so in, in some of the areas where there's fill occurring, there's uncontrolled access to that area, and someone could potentially come and dump a dump truck full of material without the actual owner of the property knowing what they're dumping. So one of the things that's being proposed, and I'm not exactly sure yet if, if this would work for all sites, so we might have to change the language slightly. But it proposes that any site in the wellhead protection area would have to have limited and controlled access and be secured. And we're, we're not talking about really expensive fences or anything high-tech here, just even something I think as simple as, as you mentioned, Mike, in a previous conversation, as simple as a chain fence across the entrance road or...
And what, again, what Alahu is saying here, and what we want to try to do is control access to these sites. So in the middle of the night, we don't have somebody come and depositing material that the owner might not be aware of. And so it's, it's not only to protect, you know, the wellhead protection area, but we're also looking out to kind of protect the owner from unauthorized operations. We just think it'll be a little easier to control and give us an extra added bit of security.
Another proposed addition to the, to the ordinance is to, to have a prohibition on fuel storage tanks, above-ground fuel storage tanks that would be permanent. So this, this wouldn't apply to temporary tanks for construction purposes. I've been made aware that for certain emergency facilities that this might not be possible, where they need a generator to be available for electricity at a hospital, proposed nursing home facilities that may be built in the future. So we, we may have to modify that somewhat to, to comply with that. Another possibility for this getting in the way of, of proposed activity in the wellhead protection area is with the recreation area where they may have mowers and, and other equipment like that, and need a fuel source somewhere nearby. So that's, that's still being looked at, and, and I'm not sure what the final version would look like.
I think it's one, one point that the folks from Dayton made in their presentation on Thursday. They have a golf court, municipal golf course that sits on top of one of their wellfields. An advantage to them is they own it and they control it. But as far as pesticide fertilizer applications are concerned, they have a, a well-established schedule of application, rates of application, and a requirement that none of that material is stored at the facility, at the golf course itself. It is stored out of the wellhead protection area and brought in as needed. And again, they have a particular advantage because they do own, administer, and manage the golf course. And one point Mr. Shoemaker made in his presentation is that it's a wellhead first and a golf course second. And you can kind of tell by looking at the facility. I grew up in Dayton. I learned how to play golf at that place. But, you know, some of the areas around the ponds are not particularly well-manicured, and that's because they limit the amount of pesticide, herbicide application by a body of surface water. Good common sense in a wellhead protection area.
Okay.
Yes, Ken?
In that particular case, though, would there be concerns of runoff as well, though? I mean...
Oh, sure. Mm-hmm. And that's why, one, they don't want the material stored at the site, and they, they very carefully monitor the application of the material, and they very carefully monitor the groundwater around the golf course. What did Jim say? They had something like 30, 35 monitoring wells scattered around the golf course. So they're constantly looking at the water quality. They, they have had to go to considerable expense in some areas around Dayton to clean up contaminated wellfields, not specifically the golf course, but other industrial areas around town. So I guess the big lesson we learned from them is, and this is, this is true of anything, if, once the water supply gets contaminated, it's extremely expensive to clean it up. And if you can't clean it up, you've got a big problem on your hands, especially for us because we are so limited in the area that we have to draw water from. It could potentially be catastrophic.
And that leads very nicely into the number 15 on the list, the last change that I think needs to be discussed openly. Well, everything's open, but that needs to be said out loud here, just to emphasize. We're proposing changes to the penalties section. One of these is adding a fine for illegal dumping, and the amount is, is really not decided on at all yet. And of course, these will have to pass through the law director's office as well. But what was proposed was a $10,000 fine for illegal dumping in the wellhead protection area, which some people have told me they think is high. But if you get caught for littering somewhere, you can get a $500 fine. We're talking about illegal dumping that could, that could damage the quality of the city's drinking water supply. So I would argue for stiff fines for those types of violations. The second addition to the penalty section is that any entity or person found to have actually contaminated the water in the wellhead protection area would also be subject to a $10,000 fine. That one, I'm not so sure about right now. I think if, if the source can be pinpointed, they would be subject to EPA fines and all the, the court associated costs with, with cleanup. But, but that is being suggested as a possibility.
And again, some of this language and intent we got from looking at other ordinances. And as Member Gosney said, this is up for discussion, but we are trying to throw something out here to at least get the discussion started and see where we go from here.
Nancy?
I appreciate your, yours, the work on this. One thing I, my two experiences with dumping that I thought were problems were addressed by vigilance on the parts of citizens, and that would have been in both cases, filling with inappropriate materials, with asphaltic and other materials. So I really appreciate the way you're spelling it out. And, and I think that there was a recent incident of that this summer, you know. So I think it's, that's much more common, I bet, than, than just going out and dumping some...
And it's something that, you know, we, we do have some portions in the well, wellfields that are in the flood zone. And in order for those properties to be developed, they're going to have to be brought up out of the 100-year flood plane to FEMA specifications. So some filling is going to be necessary. I think it behooves us to monitor closely and regulate it as much as possible to make sure it's done safely, effectively, and without risk to the wellhead protection area.
So you imagine the intent to fill will become part of the permitting process?
Well, it's already a requirement.
It will be enforced then?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
We, we would like to have that language specifically in the wellhead ordinance. Intent to fill with material known as clean hard fill is already a state law. It is required by Ohio EPA, and...
None of those guys are here, though.
Don't think so. But, you know, we, that's been on the books for a long time, and the county health department is an authorized enforcement agency for EPA on solid waste matters. So those notices are to be filed with me, and we would like them also to be required to be filed with the city as well.
It's a great idea.
Any other comments from council?
Again, you know, appreciate the thought that has gone into all of this. I think it would be helpful to me to see this with the actual strike-through and new language, you know, in place in the ordinance to make sure. I mean, I think that sometimes when we've undertaken significant revisions of areas of code, there can be issues of cross-referencing and, and how things all fit together. And it would be helpful to see together what the proposal is, you know, in the context of the existing code.
Absolutely. And I, I plan to do that. This, this is just a summary for, for council members and others.
What is the secondary containment, exactly, that kind of thing? What's expected?
Exactly where it is. Yeah. Yeah. So that will be coming as soon as I gather input on, on possibly changing some of these and then the final version. I saw your hand, Mayor White?
Yeah. Thanks for doing this again. I know you attended the wellhead training that Mike presented there. And you can't really emphasize too much that aquifer is sensitive, moderately sensitive, and that if it were to be, you know, contaminated, grossly contaminated, that I think the next option to discuss is piping it in from the Ohio River. It's a long way.
Yeah.
So, you know, in turn, or cleaning it up, which is also very expensive. I think Crystal pointed that out last Thursday. So I noticed that the, the penalties are kind of high, but I think that's something to be considered. And I guess it has to be bounced off of Law Director along the way, too.
Right. Anyone from the audience? Mr. Newman?
Hi, Ed Newman, 30 Carrier Street. It's good to see that this is happening. I always felt that this wellhead protection plan was, was weak. And there's other two things that I'd like to just put out there for consideration, whether it's through this process or in the future. There's a lot of, you know, you talk about lawn mowers being over there. Well, there's huge amount of cars that park off West State Street. And, you know, I think there's a lot of potential for, for pollution from, from leaking chemicals from vehicles at any given time. I know that one time they went and looked and they didn't see any stressed vegetation one time when there was, went out there to, to look at that. But that should probably be done every week, not just one time in a year. And then also, if we ever get to this golf course, if you look at all, you know, it's, it's sort of, to me, the, you know, my gut feeling is putting a golf course in your wellhead protection zone and putting all these chemicals on, on it is playing Russian roulette with your, with your wellhead source. So it's, it's a bad idea. I mean, if there's a way to do a golf course without putting chemicals, I think that's a great idea and should be explored. But putting things that are supposed to kill, you know, other members of our biotic community where you're getting your water, just, you know, intuitively doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I agree with what you said. I, I think that's something we need to look at down the line. And several communities do chemical-free golf courses, or at least synthetic chemical-free. So it's, it's something that's been discussed at length in Athens in the past, and perhaps we'll see it again.
That might make one comment.
Yes, yes, please.
We did, in response to concerns about West State Street, we did make some changes in our program, and we have been looking at it on a, on at least a weekly basis, if not a biweekly basis. I think that will probably tail off a little bit here now because baseball season's over and we anticipate much less traffic down in that area. But we have been in particular looking at that issue on a frequent basis, not, not just once. I think that would be my ending comment, other than let's take care of the wellfield. We learned quite a bit from the folks at Dayton and hope to continue the process.
Go ahead.
Thank you. A question regarding some of the information you learned in Dayton. Was there much discussion relevant to railroads and train?
Sure.
Because, because obviously those on the west side know that the train comes through pretty often.
We, we do consider the railway to be probably the biggest thing we need to keep an eye on. It's the one thing that in the blink of an eye could be a big problem for us. Dayton has a couple of main lines that run through their wellfields. They have a, a good working relationship with the railroad. We've established contacts with the railroad here. I think it's also important to understand that they, too, have their own security issues. And there are some things that, while they're cooperative, that they just feel in their security interest that they don't want to put out there for the public. And I don't, I certainly don't fault them for that. But we do have a cooperative relationship with the railroad at this time. Mayor?
At the presentation, this was a training for residents in the wellhead protection area. I know the wellhead protection team sent out about 700 letters, 700-plus letters to all the neighborhood people in that area, myself included. I attended, you did as well. There was a, a section of, of the presentation concerning the railroad, and it's as, as a greatest threat. It documented the, the past train wrecks that occurred. It followed to the fact that we have had citizens actually report slippage on the railway. And, and again, it is a concern. We've had, if you go to the rail area, you'll see that we have no spraying signs up right now, so they're not throwing, you know, herbicides on their tracks. So we've got, we're, we're working on it. And again, it's short of moving to train tracks or the, or the wellfield. You know, it's always going to be a high-risk factor. But, and again, this was brought up, it took up part of the presentation time. Thank you.
Any other question? Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Cooper. I'd also like to thank you not only for helping, for being the person that put these revisions together, but also for your great work protecting our water supply here from businesspeople and residents alike. So thank you. That's all I have from the Environment Committee. So... Can we move on to the next one? We're going to go backwards, right, to finance and personnel. And actually, Member Bane is going to start this discussion of the budget process. We had a report from the auditor at our last weekly meeting, giving her projections for 2009 revenue projections. We are holding that information, and we will plug it in to a much larger format that we're going to be developing here in the next...
May I go ahead and hand out some handouts?
We don't have enough. What we, what we have on the sheet is an assignment for the
members of the committee. And we see that our 2009 budget work session is scheduled for the 10th of November. We may have to schedule it on a different date. And we also have to have some additional work on, take a look at the non-union and support transfers on another, at another time. And so we broke it down so everybody has a whole task to do, and the task will follow the actual assignment. Jim Flanders, the person in charge of the general fund, we have pleased Player's Streets and Recreation. We moved people around a little bit, so their comfy little location was changed. And what we would like you to do, we'll show in a minute, proprietary funds and other admin, water, sewer, garbage. What we have are some materials in the office, the expenditure reports, and Bill offered to, offered to go over that with anyone who wants. We'd like to add a list of vehicles. And so here's what, what we're thinking we're, we'd like to do this year. We all know that the financial situation looks a little murky. I can see lots of potential pitfalls. I've told some of you that I was working with students in the pantry, and they said some of their friends had lost their funding for next year, their loan funding. I'm hoping, you know, that that doesn't happen or they find another source. But that's kind of where it hits Main Street. And there's no doubt that that's going to happen to some of our, our people. But anyway, having said that, Jim has already asked for this. What we're thinking of doing is proceeding as follows. We're going to have the 100ths and 200ths generated by the auditor's office. That'll include steps for the people still doing step increases for 2009, and then the increase that we added in June last year, which has an annual timeframe. And sometimes there may be changes that we'll have to accommodate. And so that, well, the first thing you need to do is find out how much money would be involved in 100ths and 200ths. And I think that can be provided pretty easy, easily. We're only talking about full-time staff at this point in time. Those that are mentioned in the staffing ordinance, and the benefit costs, too. This is one piece of information. The second thing that we're talking about with respect to staffing is that we really need to find out if the overtime this year was typical, atypical. Will this increase, decrease, or stay steady? I know we cannot imagine fire calls, but all the same, you know, there are things that we, we probably could look over a longer timeframe. A second thing that we feel like... A second thing that we feel like we have to get a handle on, especially in today's world, is we need to find out exactly what our utility costs are going to be. Especially, and most, very importantly, we have natural gas, utility costs, and electricity and gasoline. The first two are needed in the proprietary funds. I mean, we have to keep the buildings warm, okay, so that will be some cost. But we have extensive investments in the utilities, and we need to have those money secured, too. So, if you kind of are following along, you can see that we're going to, first of all, look, put together staffing and utilities. And we ask for any projected decrease in utilities, too. Oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We can see this happening. So, your job then is to take the 2008 appropriation in your area and subtract the 2009 projected one-hundreds and two-hundreds for the staffing ordinance, and subtract the potential utility increases, and find out what's left for the expenditures in three-hundreds and four-hundreds, and so on. And we also have to back out, I guess, I didn't even remember, the Internal Service Fund. But, and then we'd like you to go out and kind of ask around them. Go sit with the people in the sewer plant. I mean, there's nothing like it, if only the ambiance is real. You need that experience. Water plant's more difficult because of homeland security, but fundamentally, talk with the people and ask them what they see, because I think we're going to be short money in some areas. And so, the question is, do you want to still have that olivamba sitting in the backyard that you're driving, or would you rather have an intern?
Or health insurance.
Or, no, health insurance, we've already included, sorry. But what we've done is say, these are the basics, and let's kind of talk about it. By the 10th, we might have, we'd like to have a meeting. Jim, you want to jump in, bail me out, whatever?
No, I, we have, Nancy and I arbitrarily set up some teams with two council members working together. And as she said, we'd like for you to go talk to Crystal at the water plant.
Jeff at the sewer plant.
And Andy at the Streets Department. Talk to, and go over some of these questions and concerns that Member Bain has been talking about. If you have, if you're not understanding this, then talk to one of us and we'll try to straighten it out. But you've got a couple of weeks to make contact, and it would be really good if you and your partner could go together and just gather this information. We're going to, we're trying to get everybody involved in this budgetary process, making the budget real for all of us. And so, that's where we are. Mayor, did you have, it looked like you were quizzical.
Yeah, because basically, if you're talking about department head, you want to go Nick Carr for the water and sewer. I mean, it'd be nice to have, to put Crystal maybe and Jeff into the loop, but technically, Nick Carr is head of the department.
Well, we expressly heard from, I heard from Crystal last year once when I was at the library, and she said she'd really wish somebody would ask her what she wants.
Okay.
And so, I think, I'd like to honor that because I think that, you know, you might get telemetry at one level, but at another level, you might get something else.
Okay.
So, you can talk to both of them.
Question is, we separated water and sewer. Should we not have?
Again, Nick Carr's the department head of Division of Water and Sewer. He would be the appropriate person as a department head to go to.
We're like.
Both plants are now under lockdown, too. So, it does have to, it will require in advance, if you actually wanted to visit the facility, an advance request.
Well, the question is, you know, what, how information flows? And I guess that we'd like probably both levels if we could. I mean, I don't think you'd be against that, would you? The flow of information?
If we, okay.
I would ask that you coordinate it with Nick Carr on his overseeing Division of Water and Sewer.
You're drifting off. Could you say it aloud louder? Could you state that again? I didn't hear it. You might have gone out to TV land.
I think I said I would ask that you would coordinate it with Nick Carr.
But then you were continuing to talk.
The Director of Water and Sewer. I just wanted to mumble that.
Okay.
You know, let's not fixate on that either. We're talking about actually in the fires, going to the two fire stations and seeing what's going on there. We're not talking about only talking to the chief. I mean, we, to find out what's going to be happening over five years. I don't know if this doesn't work, we'll try something else.
I will take your advice.
Attorney.
Am I allowed to speak? Actually, I think this is a wonderful plan. I think it's a great idea. And this kind of coincides with what I handed out tonight. If I could briefly just talk about it. As I said, it's just throwing information out there. I know I just gave it to you. The budget projections, but these are salary projections that Jim had asked me for previously. It's only a beginning, and I had Christie, our payroll administrator, put this together. These aren't even all of the general fund departments, but this gives you an idea. These are based on, for the non-union, 3% increases, which is what they get for raises. If they have a union such as police and fire, it's according to their contract, which might be a little bit different from that. I highlighted the police amount. That's the current amount of their salary budget. So, it depends on, you know, they're starting negotiations right now, and depends on what kind of increase they get for next year, how much that will go up. I did this, brought this tonight just so you could have something to look at, have an idea of how much the Personnel Services do cost, and if there are any other items you want on there. And actually, he did mention just the full time, and that is what we did. So, this is really, you know, nobody has to comment or tell me, just, you know, you can let me know after you look at it if you need more. I mean, it needs to be completed for the entire city. But if you want something done differently, I'd like to know in the next few days before we go through and do every single department, which is, you know, 50. And then find out that you wanted me to add something else in the spreadsheet. So, that's the purpose of that. And as Nancy's already said, you really start with the staffing. That's the major part of every company's budget. And the other thing I handed out, and most of you probably saw this in the newspaper last week, and this is just my pitch for, we already have talked about transfers from other funds to the Internal Service Fund. I think everybody understands the necessity for that. Those are our mechanics and half of Ron Forrest's salary because of the work he does with the computers as far as, but we've had discussion over the years about how much that should be, how that should be computed. In that, in that fund, it's pretty straightforward. You take the number of vehicles, the number of computers, and whatever the budget is for the salaries. There are very few supplies. The supplies come out of the individual budgets. If a sewer department car needs fixed, the, you know.
Brake shoes come out of there.
Right, comes out of their department, not out of the internal service. Anyway, that should be pretty straightforward. The one that worries me is the internal admin transfers. And those are what you might call the overhead costs in the general fund for the services that are provided by my office, the mayor's office, Service Safety Director, Code Enforcement. And we have some shortages this year, and there was an issue, the sewer fund didn't have anything budgeted. And I think if, you know, if they can, they should pay their fair share. We write paychecks to them and pay their bills like we do all these other departments, my office does anyway. And so, I'd like to talk about that, getting some appropriations to make those transfers by the end of the year, or just if nothing else, an issue of fairness, because some departments did have money budgeted, and they are paying for those services. What this article is, is, just points out the fact that this is common practice. The county obviously has what they call indirect costs, which is what these are, that these many departments in the county that are charged through the commissioners and courthouse for paychecks as they list, salary supplies, certain bills, you know, insurance bills are paid through the mayor's office for all vehicles, property, you know, that is shared. And so, I realize there is an issue, as they are having with certain funds, and as the sewer fund had last year of not having the money to pay that. And that would be the last bill in your pile at home, you know, the one that you could maybe slide with, but it probably needs to be done. If we don't take care of this, you know, it affects the general fund. And also, I'm sorry, Debbie, I just looked at you and forgot what else I was going to say. But it does, anyway, it affects, sorry. It does, it affects the general fund. And it's a legitimate cost, and I feel in particular in the proprietary funds that do make money. You know, those are our funds operating as a business, and if they were a private company, they would be paying those overhead costs maybe to their home office or whatever. And that's basically how we operate. So, that's my pitch for that. If you'd all look over that, give me any feedback, anything additional that you want. In the meantime, Nancy's already given me a homework. I can work on that.
And one other point that we talked about earlier in the discussion today was sometime in the next few weeks, you're going to propose a formula for, for us to.
Right. Like I said, it's easier for the Internal Service Fund as far as the internal admin. The MAXIMUS study that some of you remember was done a few years ago, we've used that as a base. We're not sure that the entire cost of the services should be charged, but that might be something you could, you know, maybe 80%. You know, but yes, we are working on that. That one's just a little bit harder to come up with, but we have started that process, and we'll get that, like you said, Jim, in the next couple of weeks.
The MAXIMUS study is actually what I was going to mention for newer members of council, that this was something that we actually had a third party from the outside come in and do some analysis of how much time goes into, you know, processing payroll for different departments and things like that to kind of fairly allocate those costs. And part of it was looking at things like water and sewer that, you know, bring in their own revenue. We can't use that revenue for general revenue, expend, you know, costs that the city has to cover, but it is fair to charge them for, you know, payroll and some of those general admin things. So, it was actually based on an analysis of the cost of providing those services. And probably there are still copies of that around if newer members of council want to see the study.
I got one, if you want.
And I think the question really is not, shall we do it, but are the current ones fair and equitable?
Exactly.
And that's the fundamental question. And you already alluded to that. I know that, I was shocked since we stopped transferring the money to find out how much was actually going. You know, and I felt like council really didn't have much input.
It's a lot of money. You're exactly right. And we just use the figures that were given to us.
No, I know.
From previous administration's budget, and we continued to use those this year because we really didn't, you know, get together. We've had this discussion, and I'm totally open to, yeah. Changing, you know, looking at that. But I think it still is something that needs to happen.
So, do you have your assignment?
We agree, yes. Thank you.
One question about, and I like the idea of going to the different departments and talking to people.
Well, before you start, change your, add yourself to Streets and cross Debbie out. Everybody do that, please.
Okay. That's fine, because I spent a session with Ray Hazlitt today.
No, no, this is a different thing. You're going with whoever's the leader of the.
Okay. And, but my question is down on the water and sewer? Where you have us, where we have split out water and sewer at this point?
And garbage.
Okay, so we'll keep them separate. And then Debbie and I will figure out a date to go talk with Nick.
I think it's just wise to take a look at what's out there.
Nick and Crystal.
Look at the numbers first.
Nick first and coordinate it with him. We'll do that.
Say, Captain, may I?
Well, because if you haven't been, it's interesting to go visit these plants, and it'll.
And I haven't been out. I need to get out there.
Give you a better perspective.
You know, we should have arranged that for new members of council. We used to always have a tour of all the different facilities that the city operates, and it's really a valuable thing. We should probably still do that.
I always do that for new people in my office, and George N. Folsen does an excellent job.
So, and we don't have lands and buildings on here. That's something I should add. Could you also do longevity? Please, Kathy, just up the numbers by that column? If there's any, the one thing that I think you all ought to read down is the workers' compliments that we're paying. It's all very, very substantial. You look at those numbers.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, I know some time ago, you or Nancy, you both, you had asked for potential cuts to different departments' budgets. Is that something that's coming down the line? Not the cuts coming, but are those proposed budgets coming?
You could pass them on to the appropriate people, if you want.
The biggest difficulty is they're not on one format, and therefore, you're getting, you're looking at apples and oranges sometimes. But I'll get them to you.
See how different minds work. It's amazing. Same assignment, different response. It's good.
Okay, moving on, we have a request from our own people access people for an appropriation from their fund. They have the, they have these funds to purchase some equipment. I think all of you got a copy of this. We have four cameras at $3,600 each and a computer that they use for editing. Four thousand, the total is $18,400. Again, the money is in their fund. They just need an appropriation on the next, we see, agenda. Do we need, allow you a question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if this impacts the quality of, if this will impact the quality of the broadcast, or if these are necessary to keep things.
I'm going to ask Scott Thompson to come talk to us.
Who's pushing the buttons in here?
Good evening. Right now, we have, the four cameras that are in here were bought in 2004. And what we've done typically, there's, as cameras have had problems or issues, we've passed them down to a lesser chore or lesser duty. For instance, if there's, there's about three things that can go wrong with a camera. They can have like a, basically a motherboard-type failure in the camera where it just burns up and fails. It could be a tape transport issue where it eats tapes and there's problems with that, or some of the automatic functions start failing. So, as stuff is starting to fail, say a tape transport issue has happened, we've assigned that camera down to where it just needs the passive video signal, et cetera. We're kind of to the point right now where I have about three of the cameras, and we have two in the other room that are having some issues, two have been, have come from this room down. So, my six, I have about three that I can count on to send out and come back with something, especially when we're out in the field. So, yeah, we're kind of getting to the point where I get nervous about, you know, having something to come back and put on TV, so.
At the same time, Jim, one of the things that has been under discussion, the makeup of this room and the dais that we all sat at and everything is now 20 years old. Because of some security reasons and some camera angles and some other things, we have been looking at possibly rearranging and redoing this room with a lot of input from the government people that have brought this up. And I do think it's something that probably in the next several months or so, I would like to come up with a plan for several reasons. It's not a very expensive idea. It would prevent a lot of the disruption. When people come in during the meeting, they would be at the back of the room. We're looking at probably having the dais across the back where some presentations may be easier. That is our emergency exit, and this is a lot of people on a lot of nights. And the way that this is set up, it's not the most convenient for that. So, I, this room has served us well for a long time, but I do think we can probably redo it and do better. And we have accumulated money in that fund that we have planned on using it for that purpose. So, I'd look to you guys for any other ideas that you may have. But I think, I don't know exactly when we're talking, possibly over a Christmas break, but maybe really, it may go as long as when next August break to really do it. A lot of this would still be. A lot of this would still be reusable, is what I understand and all that, but we can now do things better with security in mind. And, uh, there have been some security things that have been added around the city that, and there are some here that we won't go into, but we can improve it.
Right. Mayor Wild.
I think in the previous conversation I had with Ron, these will be high-definition cameras?
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, most of the cameras out are high-def compatible at this point.
Yeah, we're going high-def gang.
Okay.
And the other thing too...
A mixed blessing.
Yeah, and the other thing too, and in this price range, there's, there's a, I haven't narrowed it down to a specific model, there's a couple, uh, three that I'm looking at in this price range that will work. Um, one of the things that's really interesting is what they're calling the, a green camera, which is basically a transportless, tapeless camera. Uses less battery power, less energy and that sort of things. And that would, uh, eliminate one of the pitfalls of the camera itself. The tape transport, the moving parts, yeah.
The other question I have is, uh, I know we, Ron was, um, pushing for a leasing program for computers. Is this computer on lease that you're asking for? Is this a different type of computer that requires purchasing? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, I'm gonna do a purchase on this one.
Oh, okay. And the rationale being that...
Well, basically just 'cause we're, we're able to, typically, if you look at it, it's an Apple. I'm a big Apple person in our, in our office. Typically, from what the, the order's set up, is a three-year cycle on computers generally in the city. And, um, this not being a PC, we've been able to get a little more life out of it. It's lasted a little bit longer for our purposes. Being a two thousand and three model, we are seeing that it's starting to not keep up with the software requirements, so.
Just asking.
I think buying it out's the best way to go.
Other questions while we have Scott here?
I just wanna remind you, when you start doing this room through a state permit, 'cause last time they didn't, and it was a six-month delay.
Anything else?
One of the hazards of an institutional knowledge, you can remember things like that.
We had no, I had no input until I did this.
Oh, none of us, none of us did. We, uh, we walked in one day and here it was.
Well, here it was stopped.
So, don't, don't ask.
Don't ask.
Go ahead and do it that way again, yeah. Okay? Nothing more on that? Thank you Scott. We'll, uh, bring this up at Monday's meeting. Another miscellaneous item, the last miscellaneous item, I hope. Councilmember Coos, I think, has, um, a request from the, from the fire department for some equipment.
Yes, um, thank you. Chief Troxel, pardon me, brought this into my, this request into my office the other day. And, um, he needs, um, stabilization rescue equipment. And I can pass this around. I only have one copy, but I can pass it around. And, um, this is, this would be to stabilize vehicles after wrecks. He said there was a, there was a wreck where the vehicle was upside down, and they had a really hard time getting people out of the vehicle, um, because it's dangerous for them. It's, if it's upside down, you know, it wobbles and so forth. And so this equipment would, this equipment would stabilize the vehicle. And he said that the cost of the stabilization rescue equipment is thirty-eight hundred dollars. And he's requesting that. Also, he is requesting a copier. And he said the cost of that is five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And he, in parentheses, he has state bid pricing. So, if you would like me to, I'd be happy to contact him and, and ask him a little bit more about the copies. Could he perhaps use a less expensive copier? I'll try to find out how much copies, how many copies he makes.
I think that's a reasonable question. Thank you.
Sure, I'll do that.
So if you would go back and maybe you could have that course next week?
Sure, I'll do that.
Mayor Wild, you had your hand up?
Oh, as far as I know, the copy he has right now is, is broken, and the stabilization is, uh, they can borrow stabilization equipment from Richland occasionally, but that's only if, you know, they can get, you know, coordination at the time. And this is the concept of you have a car that's, uh, in a precarious position, or on a side or something like that, or over, that they can actually cut people out without, you know, dropping the car on somebody. At least that's the way it was explained to me from the chief. And he says he can always go to Kinko's, but he has to park in the firing... No, I'm just joking, he didn't say that.
That's everything I've got right now on personnel, finest in personnel? Oh, but we have comments from, yes?
It's not comments, and I, for this, I had thought Debbie Walker to you regarding, Jeff Maiden and the proposal for doing the floodplain mapping. And I'm not sure, this is what Elaine Getz, your intern, who she works under up here at council? So I didn't know, you? And this is a, the proposal, um, is from RJM Engineering, Jeff Maiden. It would come in at about twenty-four thousand dollars to do this mapping, HECRAZ and what have you, of a twenty-year and fifty-year floodplain, which is part of Elaine's whole project about higher standards and what do you mean?
I can speak to that some. Um, you know, we have a task force that's been working on bringing the city's floodplain rigs into compliance with FEMA, and also looking at the possibility of, um, implementing some higher standards to help us qualify for the community rating system so that everybody can save money on their flood hazard insurance premiums. After having spent a lot of time working on these, um, with many people involved from the city, the county, the neighborhoods, the, uh, chamber, um, we were then informed by ODNR that our maps would have to actually be done by an engineer. So, we, you know, Elaine spent a lot of time working on maps, Nancy helped, um, there was some consultation with Ilgard to get all the data into the model so that we could look at, um, twenty-year and fifty-year lines, partly because we didn't want the most rigid regulations to apply to folks who are out by the edge of the hundred-year floodplain. We're assuming that some of the regulations could apply in areas that are, you know, closer and gonna potentially flood more frequently. But after having done all that work, we were informed that these maps would have to actually be done by an engineer. So, that's why it's coming back.
And you can bet that some lesser being will do the maps and the engineer will sign them, right?
We've got the maps, which they just weren't done by an engineer.
I thought she was an engineer.
That's very funny.
So, you forwarded that in?
There may be coming before council, uh, requests for funding for this mapping project, this year, next year.
Hopefully sooner rather than later. Really, um, a lot of the work has been done. We've gotten feedback from ODNR on, um, the proposed regulations. And, you know, if you count up the number of people and businesses that are paying flood hazard insurance, it could be a significant savings if you, you know, if we are able to qualify for these discounts.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're done.
Utilities committee, I'm gonna try and real quickly. I'll name things on my agenda. Um, one of them, well, two of them actually collapse into one. The first one is grass clippings and pickup of little pieces of wood. And that has been done on a complimentary basis. I have complained about that for a while. I just don't think you should do things that cost a lot of money for a small number of people. And I think we're, we're onto something now. We're, we're thinking about, I'm thinking about proposal, here's the proposal. Nothing about leaves. You can come back with a leaf proposal later on. The leaf pickup is sacrosanct right now. It can stay the way it is. Which is, you suck 'em up along the edge of the curb with a very expensive piece of equipment. And what else goes in is anybody's guess. Sometimes people wrap 'em in plastic and then the people dump 'em out. That aggravates my neighbors a lot. But, and also, we're not gonna, this has nothing to do with the Christmas tree pickup. Those two things are in code. This is not in the code. So what, what I would propose is, and I've given it quite a bit of thought, I talked to Paul about it last week, we define the pickup as between the first of April and the first of November. We're not be, you know, in other words, during the plowing season, we won't be doing any pickup. And I'm sure there are people that can find some grass to cut with their scissors and get in a bag, but we're, we're talking about, um, a different sort of system going on now. Obviously, I am not a lawn care person, but, um... So after we've defined pickup, the other thing that we'd like to do, moving toward composting, a laudable, eh, is...
I thought it was a Halloween costume.
It's a, it's a fifty-pound bag. This is not garbage. This goes into the compost, as it is. Plastic bags are garbage, and they are a problem and a nuisance. So we need to require our citizenry who choose to have us pick these up at the curb to buy these. They're at C and E or at Lowe's. If we're willing to commit, they're about fifty cents a piece for fifty pounds. And, the cost of pickup, um, pickup, so the bag is full, this is the way I understand you do it. You, the bag is full, it's ready to go to one of the composting facilities that we have. And so then you, um, you have to have a sticker on it, and the sticker's gonna cost you two dollars, 'cause nothing is free in this world, and we were silly to be doing it for nothing. So the two-dollar fee will offset the cost of picking it up, pay for the truck. It's a zero-sum game, folks, there's no reason why the street department should be bearing the cost of this. The money should go back to them. And, um, the stickers would be purchased in advance, much as the garbage stickers are purchased. We can talk more about that later, but the two-dollar sticker, this is probably a one-year-only proposition. When you call for a pickup and they are supposed to theoretically... Organize the routes. And as I've told you, I've seen them walk, go, you know, it's kind of a, an intern-type of job. And then for the second year, we can possibly get a different pickup agent. I mean, I just don't see during the high-profile times necessarily spending a lot of time picking up grass clippings and, um, pieces of wood. Those would have tags on them, also be two dollars each. And so, the fifty-pound bag, the fifty-pound, the fifty-pound bag is a deal. When you start looking at what's out there, they're all these little plastic bags, all the, all garbage. Okay, so that's a proposal. You can think about it for two weeks and tell me what you think. Any ideas, questions, proposals? Yeah?
I, with, if, when you say pieces of wood, if you mean the, like, brush and...
Bundled, yes.
Sticks and stuff? You know, I think that a lot of people really appreciate that we pick those things up. And I don't know, you know, if, when we have a big windstorm, we have a lot of maples that are subject to that vermicillium wilt and they drop branches and they're like crazy.
Wait a minute, I'm not talking about windstorms. I'm talking about data, the weekly pickups. In a windstorm, all the bets are off. The service director and my plan would be able to say, "We had a terrible windstorm, we're gonna pick up all the wood that's out."
I just think we'll end up with a bunch of piles of sticks in people's backyards, which could be a problem in terms of critters, you know, having more habitat in people's backyards, if, if we're charging to pick up sticks and limbs, even if it's just the day-to-day and, and not the windstorms. There, my, there was a property in my neighborhood that had just a massive pile of brush in the backyard for years.
And then it catches on fire. Amazing, the way that works. You know, I don't think we can solve every problem, but doing something for nothing in today's world, when gasoline prices are what they're going to be, is not a good idea. So what solutions do you have?
My turn.
You're gonna throw it in your back forty, I know.
I wish I had a back forty. Uh, you know, I'm probably luckier than a lot of people on the amount of trees that I have on my property. It's, I've got some very nice trees that drop leaves all the time and drop sticks and branches all the time. And when I think of what would come out any one week, if I would have to fill up those bags, it would be ten, fifteen bags on an average. While I agree, I do not mind paying for the city to haul things away, and I've never once availed myself of service. When we call ourselves a tree city and we really encourage people to plant trees and develop trees and to have trees, um, I don't think two dollars for that bag would haul much away. And, you know, if, uh, I don't know, I, again, I don't mind paying for the service. I'll pay for it, but I also don't wanna have to own an old truck that sits on the back of the property so that I am able to get rid of stuff, just to have for a very, very seldom-used trip to the recycling center.
When we're picking 'em up at the curbside is the current thing we're talking about. Eventually, what you could do is have, um, for a dollar a bag is what I, when I was meeting him with the solid waste district on a different matter, he said he probably could do it on Friday for a dollar a bag, pick up bags. And, and the, and the bundles of brush. But first of all, let's separate, you know, windstorm is not what we're talking about, we're talking about the day-to-day. And, I don't know, it's, it's thorny problem, but I think that we need to start talking about it. I had some roses that I snuck into the garbage. Multi-floral rose, it's wonderful. So fundamentally, that's where, um, we got it, it seems to me like we need to start moving. If you have different ideas, go ahead. Brush piles, maybe they're a problem, I don't know. So, let me know what you're thinking.
This is just a report from two thousand and seven street department.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have a stack of these, and everybody always said, "Oh, it didn't cost very much," but I think it just...
Well, no, it, it does, okay, but this, let's say we have a two-dollar tag on this. It behooved me to buy a one-and-a-fifty-dollar, a dollar fifty garbage bag and throw my stuff in the garbage bag for a dollar fifty, then put it in this one for two dollars plus the fifty-cent bag.
I think I'm gonna propose that we raise the bags in the garbage to two dollars.
Okay. The other thing you're seeing, if you drive around town, you'll see there's piles of bricks, of sticks around the tree trunks many times. People just say, "The tree dropped it, it's the tree's fault." They pile it up around the, the rounded tree trunks. This is one way to deal with the, uh, the bundles, that you don't wanna bundle. Grass clippings, there's a tendency, actually, now that we all can own blowers, leaf blowers and grass blowers, to blow it out into the street.
Eighteen inches from the curb, of course.
Of course. Grass eighteen inches from the curb, that should keep it from going down the storm sewer.
And the loose leaf service is important for the storm sewers, you know.
Yeah, well, that's why I said, the leaves are a different matter.
Right, gotta get those sucked down. But it is significant resources going towards that. Did you talk about...
So how much, let's, let's say for people out in TV land, could you read that for us, or tell how many leaves?
Oh, the, the numbers, I gave all mine away. Okay, essentially, this is street department annual statistics, where they talk about leaf trips. Last, last year, they did a hundred and fifty leaf trip. This is basically the vacuum truck, I believe.
Okay.
And they, you know, they fill it up, and it, you'll see that times eight, actually, that's his calculation, how many cubic yards. Times by eight, and I'll give you a hundred and fifty-five times eight.
And these are recycled, are re-composted, right?
What?
These are composted.
These are composted, yes.
Everything here is composted.
Yes, um, the yard waste bags collected, we've got ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five yard wa- bags. These are grass clippings as well as leaves. These go in bags out there. The problem they have, a discussion I had with Andy is this, um, to make this work, actually what you need is you just need something that will make, turn this into confetti. If you take this out to Canoville, put it in the sledge field, it'll break down, but first it'll shred, and then large pieces of this cardboard will be down, going towards, down fifty basically at this point. And I asked him, said, "Could we use actually a chipper?" He says, "No, just cause it's a chipper."
Just, just to clarify, we're thinking, you know, like in, when this goes into effect that either Jeffers or there will be a composting site, maybe it'll be for Ridge, maybe it'll be somewhere else, but, I know, maybe, big maybe, very big maybe.
Yard waste bundles collected, three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two. Yard waste trees collected, I guess these are trees that, uh, this could, all I know would be Christmas trees, it doesn't really distinguish between. So two hundred and sixty-four trees trimmed, two thousand, two thousand and eighty. So what you're seeing here is these are the, it does take a lot. I asked, I was discussing with Andy earlier today, he says it takes about thirty-two man-hours per week to do this, to pick up the yard waste, and usually one truck to take it out, if not once, at least twice. So, um, so you're tying up one truck and you're tying up at least two people, uh, they're picking up twice a week at this point. And it does cost. The question is, I think, the reluctance is, um, if, you know, this is what, you know, it's not here, but you, you know as well as I, when every time the tipping charges went up, the hollows out in the countryside would start to fill up a little bit more with stuff because it was easier to throw it over the back forty than to take it to the, the landfill.
Well, the commissioners could solve that problem by having mandatory pickup, as we do, but they don't want to, so...
But, okay, but yard waste...
So it's their problem.
Yeah, yard waste, I don't, I don't generate yard waste, I have a compost pile in my backyard. I have a compost pile in my backyard.
Nor do I.
And you do too, I suspect, right? So we're talking about.
We're self-interested.
People who don't want to do, who don't wanna do that, who'd rather say, okay, I'm gonna pile it against the trees because it's the tree's fault, I'm gonna blow it into this street because it's the tree's problem. Or, as you say, we can vacuum it up too. So I hesitate to go put a charge on it, but at the same time, I know we are, you can see the numbers we're generating here, yes.
Can we burn it?
Well, chew on it.
Chew on it, yes.
Especially the wood, make it, you know, more.
Wood chucks, yes.
Okay. The other thing, when I talked to Paula, I asked her if she could, next quarter, run, because of the educational component and the difficulties of getting a handle on this, do a test area and come back to us on the clean committee report. My reasoning was that it would be really hard to assess the impact of it. I think we've talked about this before, you know, how it's working and so on. I think people blame recycling for trash not getting picked up out of the containers in front of stores. I just don't see that as a cause and effect relationship. On the other hand, I think to do this right every year, we're going to have to have some person doing the talking and doing the educating. And I don't see who it's gonna be or how it's gonna be paid for. I guess I'd like to know what the true cost will be, so.
I was unable to get in touch with Roger Bell, and he's off today, but I did speak with Mike Gosnell, our litter control officer. His suggestion is to take the north block of Court Street because it's the most set up already with some centralized recycling locations, so.
We were thinking maybe the more challenging one would be a better test than this one right here. I mean, that was just from people who work uptown, but I'll appreciate, do the north one. And one thing that I think that we have to be absolutely clear on, if a container full of trash is contaminated, it's trash. We're not gonna be separating it. I don't think we have the wherewithal to do it at this point in time. I think, you know, you have to go into this with your eyes wide open, and I think that's, from two times, well, now Bill will talk about institutional memory. We used to have a drop-off recycling container out at the city garage, right by the fountain, right in front of the community center, the one that some people like to tear down. It was all flapped and people would just throw stuff in. And I remember once putting some cans in there and there was a peanut butter jar, you know, full of peanut butter, three-quarters gone, but still some in there. And you know what happened? Before long, you had different types of animal life running around. And it wasn't just for shelter, they actually had food there. It was a regular palace for them. And so then, the second time was at the Atco site, and it became a one-stop drop-off for people from all over the county. Once again, they dropped off their recycling, but also their garbage. And that is, you know, that's the risk we run, but the educational component is everything in this, and I'm looking forward to what you come back with, Paula. Thank you. And do the north side if that's the one you wanna do. It's probably easier. You're moving ahead, right? Moving ahead. Okay, I'm done, basically. There's a lot of stuff I'd like to talk about. The education thing, you know, it's where we started. Landlord tenant form, education, it's all about education. How can we possibly not do that education? And I'll go to class in winter quarter when it's my quarter on and I'll say, how many people live in the downtown area? Where do you put your garbage? There, clueless, and it's not their fault. Where do you do your recycling? Bring it to Port, bring it to Clivenger, drop it along the way in the buckets, you know. So the educational thing will be daunting, I think. I'll tell you what I come, I'll see if anybody lives on the north end, see if they've heard. Good, all right, I'm done.
Transportation, that's a tough act to follow.
I know it.
I don't know how you're gonna do it.
I can't even say something like I've saved the best for last, but it's important. We have two items. One of them, the first one would be the walk a mile in her shoes, and I just wanted to update people of what I was planning to do or suggesting to council to see if there's discussion, controversy about it. This is a group that is walking to raise money for a local organization, and men will be walking down Court Street, they're proposing to walk down Court Street on Sunday, November 9th. And they have been willing to accommodate and start at 1:00, so they won't be interfering with any kind of services that are going on, on Sunday morning religious services. However, the group is strapped for finances and does not have the money to pay for what would be the police costs while they're walking on the street, which I think were estimated at about $1,000. A reduced rate of 400, they said they still, they don't have anything to pay. So I'm bringing this up now rather than waiting till next week because I'd like to hear the discussion on this. I have not been part of a street closing where fees have been waived before, so I'd just like your input. If there are no problems with waiving the fee, then fine, but if there are, I'd like to bring it up.
If you use the rolling closing, is it still really 400 bucks?
They bring them in on overtime, it's three hours minimum, so, you know, if you have a number and the number of intersections. The last I heard, and perhaps I didn't speak with them since you did, I got a message from Brandon today that stated, his understanding was they'd go on the sidewalks until they got to Ohio University property. I was copying on emails that showed it already as a registration form beginning at 11:00 a.m. Was that just a template? I, so I don't know.
I have, he's also indicated his willingness, and this is an email from you, that he's indicated a willingness to move the start time to 1:00.
Then via the police department, they received the email and copied me that had the registration and looked like a brochure's already done up, walk a mile in her shoes, 11 a.m.
11, so 11 on the sidewalks.
He indicated theirs that they were going to go for.
That sounds like.
Although, wouldn't it almost be worth it to watch these men walk in high heels and enter the brick street?
On the brick street.
Volunteer for safety teaching.
I'm only watching.
We could always waive the fees as they pick up the leaves and grass.
Well, thank you, Paula, I appreciate the update. So that sounds like it's a reasonable resolution to it, and so it won't need to come before council then next week. However, I do have an update, and this is on the vehicles for the street department. And I met with Ray Hazlett today to go over the accounts, so I would understand it a little better. We have two ordinances, one that was passed earlier this year and one that's in process now. The earlier ordinance was 089-08, and that was for a bucket truck. And if you'll remember, that is one bucket truck unit that is replacing what are now three vehicles in the street department. A small bucket truck, a large bucket truck, and a utility vehicle that has cabinets on the back end of the truck. The original appropriation for that, we authorized $60,000. We appropriated 20. What's happened is, is that when we did those authorizations and appropriations, we were thinking that we would get a certain trade-in value on the truck, the old one, and rather than getting 20,000, we're only going to get 5,000. And there had been a few other add-ons, so then the cost of the truck is $76,000. So in order to make sure that there's the appropriate amount of money, both authorized and appropriated, we need an additional $16,000. So we will increase the appropriation from 20 to $36,000. And then we're gonna even increase the authorization by that $16,000 from 60 to $76,000. So I just, I'm going over the math with you. It's basically, we didn't get the trade-in that we thought we would. Now, Andy is checking, he's looking into some other possible courses of action. So he has this one, this bid right now that's firm. If he can get a better deal somewhere that assures him he'd still get the same kind of parts that are needed for the bucket truck, he'd, of course, go with, you know, a lesser model if he can, or a lesser, one with lesser expense. So I just wanted to go through the math with you on that. The other appropriation is 0117-08, and that's the one that we began a few weeks ago. It's an ordinance for the two new trucks. Those are larger vehicles, the three-quarter ton diesel and the three-quarter ton gas. In talking with Ray today, he urges us that appropriation was started, saying, we're gonna buy those two new vehicles. We didn't put the $15,000 light pickup truck in that appropriation because it's not necessarily needed when it's under $25,000. Ray says for clean tracking records and documentation during the audit, he thinks it would be easiest to just put the third vehicle in there. And so for that reason, we would wanna increase the authorization expenditure from 75 to $90,000 so that that third truck can be listed.
0117-08 will be a third reading next week.
Yes.
Are you looking to amend it? And do you need both a emergency clause and a suspension, a third reading?
I do think we need to amend it, and I can find out. Paula, would you have that information on whether we need to?
I feel like the bucket truck, we went without the bucket truck, we administration, all wrong, by saying, oh, we're gonna get this much for insurance and what have you, as opposed to just saying, this is how much to get a new one and then let that all flow. I don't have a feel that this is required as an emergency, but once it's authorized, goes through the readings and what have you, then he can encumber the money from 2008 funds as he carries on to go.
Well, when we amend it, it'll go back to first, so keep that in mind.
When you amend it, it goes back to first.
Goes back to first reading, yeah.
But will the Christmas ornaments go?
Yeah. The real question of it all.
That's the bucket truck. That one I'm asking for the emergency.
That's not the three-quarter ton.
And if I understand, he's probably not gonna do a trade-in at 5,000. The last, the dialogue, it sounded that was unacceptable.
Is he gonna drive it into the river or what's he gonna do with it?
We're not sure yet.
eBay, I think you talked about government eBay again.
He did talk about government eBay.
It's a functioning truck.
It's just that it's big.
It's just the government eBay functioning.
Sarah Palin sold the jet on government eBay.
She tried to.
Do we have any jets to sell?
And bought a bigger one. So that's my explanation for these two ordinances. I just wanted to go through. So does this take the money out of the carryover that would go forward for next year? And are they expecting to buy new trucks next year? Will this diminish the number of street miles that get paved? And I don't wanna keep this here any longer, but, I mean, since it's, they're gonna have X number of dollars. This, I don't believe this comes out of the carry.
Well, yes, the effect would be, it comes out of carryover, yeah.
This is part of his plan, has been, since, just like every other department that's come before you, said we have this planned vehicle turnover, and this is been planned.
Based on the good old days, right?
But we are culling so many from the fleet, as you know, so.
Yeah, the Levant. We appreciate it. More. That was the only.
Okay, compare 2116 versus 117 in terms of trucks and cars.
Change in the cost of both.
Okay. Thank you all.
We're done.
We're done.